Everyone, I'm going to call to order the October 19, 2022 Planning and Zoning Board To start off, I would like to have everybody join in on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for doing that. So, Mary's coming in. I would like to introduce the other members of the Planning and Zoning Board. Mary Furtig is just now walking in. To my left is Jay Scheckman. To my right is John Baranco. Down below, we have Patrick McTeague and Steve Gannon and Shari McCartney. Shari McCartney, sorry, Shari. From the city, we have Ella Parker from Design and Planning, Shari Wallen from the City Attorney's Office, and, yep, Trish is here, Michael Ferrera, and Nicholas Calaieros. And our minutes taker, Ms. Leslie Harmon. So, before we get into the meeting, if I could get somebody to make a motion on the minutes from the September meeting?
Second.
Moved by Shari?
Second.
Second by Patrick. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Before we move into the agenda, also, I am looking to amend the minutes from the August 17th meeting, basically revising the comments from Ms. George and Mr. Greg and Mr. George. They had the names backwards in the comments, so they just want to clean it up and reverse that. So, if I could get somebody to make a motion on that?
So moved.
Second?
Is it a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Second?
Second.
Steve, you second? Thank you. Steve Gannon, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here are non-motion passes. Okay, now, we'll do some swearing in. If those who are going to speak tonight, would please stand up and be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, thanks.
All right, before we call the first case number, as we have been doing, is it the pleasure of this board to make the staff report of each and all the items where applicable part of the item? We have a yes from Shari. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We will start now. We'll start with case number UDP dash S22028. We'll start with disclosures.
I'll be sitting out on this one, Mr. Chair. We were considered to be the architects for this project, and I'm conflicted out for that reason.
Okay. Mary? Disclosures?
Yeah, I don't have any disclosures.
None.
Steve?
Site visit.
Patrick?
None.
Shari?
None.
And I had none. Okay. We'll hear from the applicant on this item, please.
I think you're in the right spot, right?
That is the correct spot.
Hi, Michael, Michael Piszi. I'm an attorney at 6625 Northwest 67th Avenue in the great city of Miami Lakes. Brave the rain and made it here. It's, I'm really honored and privileged to represent the Apex Shooting Center, also known as the founding, the Founder's Shooting Club, and we have with us today, he's gonna, we're gonna be very brief, we have the owner, Mr. Victor Grillo, who's here with his Vice President and his Director of Training and some of their, some of their members and future customers. About a, I guess about a year and a half ago, this, we appeared in front of this body, and this body unanimously changed the zoning on the Extreme Action Park and this building, 5320 Powerline Road, the Outpostle, to Commercial Recreational. So, about a, about a year and a half ago, this body unanimously and thankfully zoned Extreme Action Park and this Outpostle, 5320 North Powerline Road, to Commercial Recreational. This application is doing nothing to change the zoning or the footprint, so we're not changing the zoning, we're not doing anything to change the footprint on the building. It's simply a remodeling to use the building as a semi-private sports club, consistent with why you changed the zoning to Commercial Recreational. So, the only thing they're doing, the only thing they're doing is doing a, an internal remodeling, they're doing an internal remodel of the building, but no other changes, to construct a semi-private, public and private sports club, consistent with why it was changed to Commercial Recreational. It's gonna be right off Powerline Road in an isolated area. There's, there's no significant impact to traffic or city resources, so it's on, it's right off, it's a, it's gonna be a semi-private, public and members sports club, consistent with exactly why it was changed, which is why you gave them the Commercial Recreational zoning. It's going to have no major impact on any roadways or traffic. It's right off Powerline Road in an isolated area. And what's really nice about this place is it's kind of first of its kind. They have a Founder's Shooters Club in, in Boston, where they're well-known for their partnerships with the Boston Police Department, and they're also very well-known for their support of the police and their charitable activities, supporting children's programs, safety programs, children's hospitals. What they're gonna have at this location is, they're gonna have, obviously, they're gonna have a shooting range, public and also for private members, so, number one, they're gonna have a, a, a range that's gonna have a private members' range, but also a public range. But in addition to that, they're going to have a squash court, a little mini fitness center, they're gonna have a meeting club. So, on top of the range, including a members' range and a public range, they're going to have a squash court, they're gonna have a, a, a meeting room, so people can hold meetings there. They're going to have a little, a little fitness center, they're gonna have a little, some club space for things of that sort. So, it's gonna be a place where people can go with their families and their friends. The people, it's gonna enhance the Fort Lauderdale community, it's gonna create a number of jobs, and it's gonna be a really nice addition to that, to that, to that area, where people can come and they could, they could, they can go to the range, they could go to the members' range, they could get training, safety training, and in addition to that, they could use, they can go to the squash court, they can engage in some, some fitness, and they can meet with their colleagues. And I would also note that what's, what's good about, they've already met, they came here with the, the police chief of Boston actually traveled here, and I believe he met with your police chief. Your police chief, I believe, met with them and went out there, and they're, and they're looking forward to being, not only having a nice addition to Fort Lauderdale, in, in the perfect location, exactly why it was zoned, but they're looking to create jobs there, and they're also looking to partner with your police department and partner with your city and the Fort Lauderdale community, and support youth programs, and, and have a great community partnership. It's a win-win for everybody. I wanna end by thanking, people don't always do this, I wanna thank Michael Ferrara and your, your staff. They have really been, they're really great mentors, they, they work with, from the beginning, they work with you, they try and help you, and Mr. Ferrara and your staff in the zoning department, they really work hard to help people get it right. They facilitate making improvements to the city. They've been really fantastic. If you have, if you don't have any questions, we're here to answer any questions. And in addition, we know you have a, there's a lot of people behind us, we don't want to take advantage of being first. You never want the first guy to talk all night because everyone's waiting. I've been, I've been 30th on the list. But Mr. Grillo and just a couple of his people who are gonna join the club, they wanna take about 10 seconds each, when you, if you would give them the opportunity to just talk, say a few words. So, I'm, I'm finished, I'm here to answer questions, we hope you'll approve this, we look forward to having a great partnership, and at the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, please let us know when Mr. Grillo and his partners can just say a couple of words, maybe 30 seconds, and thank you. It's an honor to be here.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant's attorney?
I have a few. Steve here.
Go ahead, Steve.
So, it sounds like, it sounds very nice. You make it sound like a YMCA, very family-oriented. However, I all, when I look online and I check the other Founder's Club and I see what's being advertised, I see shooting club, pool, poker, chess, cigar lounge, special events, social networking, et cetera, showers, fitness, et cetera, and it, it doesn't sound so family to me, it sounds more like a gentleman's club or a, or a men's club. Does your other one include, bring families in? Do wives go there? Do children? Are there facilities for them? Are there double locker? Can you explain to me a little bit of that? And how public? Go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and let me say, and I, that's an excellent question, and I could tell you, as a, you know, former mayor of a city and city attorney, we have to watch for stuff like that. This is absolutely not going to be a gentleman's club or anything of that sort, but let me do this, since we have the owner here who owns the place in New York. With your permission, Mr. Chair, I'd like to let him take a second and address that and assuage any concerns. Can I do that, sir? Mr. Grillo?
First, thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Anything else, Steve?
And then the other question was about the public. You mentioned it's public. I see a lot of membership and members-only and whatnot, and a limited number of memberships. How much members, how many members would you allow? And how would the public come in to use the facilities? How does that work?
Sure.
Thanks.
So, Dan, I'm Victor Grillo, I'm the owner of the Founder's Shooting Club. This club is based on an existing club that I have in Massachusetts called the Weston Shooters Club. In Massachusetts, we have about 1,700 members. It's a private club only, there's not a public component to the one we have in Massachusetts. We have 70% male members, 30% female members, and we are a family club. We have events for families, parents and children, we have training for children, we have Women's Night. We're, again, everyone's welcome, everyone will have a safe opportunity to shoot, we don't discriminate against anybody. In fact, it's quite a bonding experience, shooting for the first time with your child. I've done it with both my children, it's kind of a fun thing to do. As to the club that we're opening down here, there's gonna be two components to it. There is a private members-only club, which we have been talking about and soliciting members for already, and then there's a public component. The public component is larger of the two. There'll be 21 lanes open to the public, men, women, and children, obviously under, under very strict supervision and instruction, and it's very similar to a club that's open now in Davies called Nexus. Nexus has been open for a bunch of years. Without quoting information, they do quite well, millions of dollars a year in business, and virtually all of that business is coming from Fort Lauderdale going to Davies, and all that revenue is ending up in Davies. I'm looking to take that revenue and bring it back into Fort Lauderdale by having an equal, if not greater, facility open to the public, as well as a private club for the residents of Fort Lauderdale, and actually, anyone who wants to come, but most of the residents will be, well, most of the members will be from Fort Lauderdale. And as Mr. Piszi said, it's far more than a gun club. On the private side, it's more like a social club. We have squash, and we're gonna have, we're gonna have golf simulators, there'll be table games, it's place to meet, places to eat. We're really looking to set up a community of folks to have another activity. You only, anyone who shoots, you know, you only shoot for 15 or 20 minutes. We wanna make this more like a country club where there's a place to hang out and relax and chat with your friends. So, we're really looking to create community and family, more so than just a black and white shooting range on the private side. The public club, again, all I can tell you is that our goal is to have the premier shooting facility in the state of Florida here in Fort Lauderdale.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, you know, like I said, we have some other people, but I think you, you get the gist of it, and, and we hope you'll support the application. We think it's a, it's a good thing for the city of Fort Lauderdale, and they plan to partner with your city in various community events.
Are there any other questions before we open this up to the public? Mary? All right, thank you. At this time, if you are a member of the public and you'd like to speak on this item, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Emilio Caznani, I live at 4430 Bogan Villa Drive in Lauderdale by the Sea, and I have had the pleasure of spending some time with Victor and Simon, the manager of the Founder's Shooting Club, and I can tell you, as a resident, I should go either to Palm Beach or to Nexus, which is 20 miles in either direction of my house, so it's, it's quite exciting to have something here in the city of Fort Lauderdale, to be able to spend my money in my town instead of sending it to a different place. But the facility itself is gonna be amazing, from what I understand, so I just wanted to give my few cents as a, as an enthusiast, firearm enthusiast, and sportsman. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on this item before we close the floor? If you're gonna speak on the item, please queue up at the microphone.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Simon George, I handle the sales at the Founder's Shooting Club. And just, real quickly, just to emphasize what Victor said, we're really about family. We sign up a lot of families, just signed up a family of four before I got here being members. They have three children, they're excited to join, we have children's training programs, so we are really about family as a whole, everybody, and it's a, it's really a wonderful place, and you guys will say when you, when you finally come and see us. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Cardillo, I live here at 759 Southeast, excuse me, 12th Court in Fort Lauderdale. Retired NYPD, as a guy who's had to use a firearm in the course of his duties, unfortunately, safety's paramount to me. I also have a partner in private equity fund, we import ammunition, this will be a customer of ours, as well as us, as myself being a member, and we're very selective with whom we do business. We wanna make sure the facility's safe, that it's run professionally. I can tell you, they've exceeded every item on our checklist. I'm nothing but impressed with what I'm seeing from Victor, from Simon, from the management, from the ownership, very comfortable, and I just, talking to the neighbors who have already pre-signed up for this, the community is excited about it. I can't stress what Victor said enough. I drive to Hollywood, to Nexus, or out to Loxahatchee to shoot. All that revenue's leaving our city, this will bring tremendous revenue back. Members of the Fort Lauderdale Yacht Club, I'm a member of Lagamar Beach Club, several of them have already pre-signed up for this, the community's very excited about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll close the public meeting and bring it back to the board. I have one quick question. Do you have a question? I'm assuming there'll be sales of firearms and, and ammunitions at this location?
In the public side, the Apex side, there will be sales of guns and ammunition as well, not in the private club side.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, if I may.
Go ahead, Shari.
I don't believe it was a, a part of the conditional use, but do you intend to have security?
I'm sorry?
Do you intend to have security?
You know, that, that, that's an excellent question. Security and having police there is gonna be one of the best things about this place, and Victor, if you could just very briefly tell them, the question is, what type of security? You're gonna have to make sure everybody's safe, if you could address that.
Simply put, outside of the Fort Lauderdale Police Station, this will be the most secure building in Fort Lauderdale. Ammunition and firearms are gonna be kept in a vault, everything is gonna be under 24-hour surveillance. There'll be security staff on present, on premise 24 hours a day, and during work hours, there'll probably be 15 or 20 armed guards in the facility at all times.
Question?
Go ahead.
In terms of firearm sales, excuse me for not knowing exactly how this works, but is there, is it, is it accurate that there's a three-day waiting period, or is there some, will people have a waiting period before they're able to purchase a firearm before?
I'm, I'm sure that, that, yeah. Okay, go ahead. We got the, we got the right guy, he's shopping at the bin.
Hi, my name is Christian Bowen, I'll be the general manager of the public side. So, the-
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name?
Christian Bowen.
Thank you.
No problem. So, state laws mandate that if you don't have a concealed weapons permit, there's a five-day waiting period for Broward County, Palm Beach County, Miami Dade County, as well as, I think, one other county up north. So, provided that the customer does not have a concealed weapons permit, they will have a five-day business day, so Monday to Monday, for instance. If they have a concealed weapons permit, it's the same day. So, as soon as the FDLE 1040 background check form comes through, and it's a, it's a pass, then they can take their firearm home that day if they have a concealed weapons permit, and only if they have a concealed weapons permit.
Okay, thank you, yeah. The only, the only thing that I, you know, note, just kind of looking at an aerial to the board, is in terms of like neighborhood compatibility, right? There's, there's gonna be firearm sales, and it's next to the Extreme Action Park, where it's, you know, filled with children, and then the airport and, and the soccer stadium, so.
And the, the sale of firearm can only be done, be sold to a person of 21 years of older, that is a resident of Florida as well.
Any other questions? I have a quick follow-up question. Twice I heard in the presentation, we're bringing this facility into the city of Fort Lauderdale is gonna bring monies back to the city from Davie and, I believe, Loxahatchee. I mean, other than real estate taxes that are paid by the owner of the property, how is that bringing revenue back into the city of Fort Lauderdale?
It will be sale, again, but there'll be different revenues generated on premise. You'll be able to go to the range and shoot, you'll be able to purchase a gun, you'll be able to take lessons, all of which will generate taxable income, sir.
Yeah, that sales and use tax, which goes to the state and then back to the county, but so, there's, there's no direct agreement with the city that's pending or anything like that to, to be able to open this facility or something?
We've had discussions, sir, with your police chief about having Fort Lauderdale police force use the facility for training. We've had those discussions, but nothing has been finalized yet, sir.
Anyone else? Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve site plan, case UDP five, what number is that? S22028.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from-
Based on that, let me just say, based on the, on the staff report and the testimony heard from the, by the applicant.
Okay. Motion by Mary, seconded by Shari.
Can I read the resolution?
I'll go ahead and call the roll, please.
Uh, can I read the resolution?
Sure.
A resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a conditional use permit for a 31,015 square foot indoor shooting center, firearms range, a clubhouse gym, a squash court, golf simulator, and locker rooms for the property located at 5320 North Powerline Road, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the CR District, case number UDP S22028.
Thank you.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
He abstained.
He abstained. Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Wayman?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Good luck, gentlemen. Shoot straight.
Thank you very much, and we, we're grateful for your support, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Moving on to the next case, case number UDP dash S22031. We'll start again with disclosures. John?
Visited the site.
I'm sorry?
I visited the site.
Thank you. Mary?
I visited the site.
Uh, I got a call from the applicant's attorney. Jay?
What is the applicant's attorney's name again?
Deana Gray.
I got a call from applicant's attorney.
Stephen?
Site visit and call from applicant's attorney.
Patrick?
Spoke with applicant's attorney and site visit.
Shari?
Spoke with the applicant's attorney as well.
All right, thank you. All right, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. Deana Gray, land use attorney for the applicant.
Dina Gray, land use attorney for the applicant. And we do have a PowerPoint presentation. Let's see if I can... Assuming that'll go up on the, it go up on your screen, or will it go up?
Dina, you're going to need to pull the microphone a little bit closer so we can hear you.
Okay. Is that better?
Yep, that's fine.
I'm joined here tonight by the owner representative, Evan Rosenblatt. He is here. He's a senior vice president of development. I'm also here with Julian, who is right here. He's a senior planner, who is instrumental in helping put everything together. We're here regarding an existing professional office building located at 6400 North Andrews Avenue, and we are here tonight requesting a parking reduction. All right, I will see if I can... I don't think this is working. Sorry, please excuse my lack of tech skills here. Okay, so this first slide is a location map. It is located on Andrews Avenue. It is west of 95. You could see that McNabb is to the north and Cypress Creek Road to the south. And the subject property is there, highlighted in yellow. This next slide, it gives you a little closer view of the building. It is existing. There will be no changes to the exterior of the building. It is located in the B3 zoning district, so it's a heavy commercial zoning district, and it is in the employment center land use designation. Here's the next slide. So this slide here, it divides up the parking zones to give you an idea of where, how the parking is divided up for the site. And Zone A has 28 parking spaces, B has 67 parking spaces, C has 37, and D has 75 parking spaces for a total of 204 existing parking spaces. So this next slide is a breakdown. It was a parking study that was prepared by TRAVTEC. Joaquin Vargas and Carl put this together for us. They did a detailed study, which is in your, should be in your agenda packet. The way that this is broken down, it shows the zones that I just described, broken down in how many available parking spaces there are in each of those zones, for a total of 204 existing parking spaces. So the time intervals of the parking study that was done, as you can see, there's a significant surplus, even with the seasonal adjustment calculation in there. 76 parking spaces during the peak hour on Tuesday, June 14, 2022, and then 77 again on June 16. So there's approximately 67 parking space surplus when the parking study was conducted. So this next slide, it breaks down essentially what we're doing. So there is currently existing approximately 37,000 square feet of existing general office, 9,025 square feet of medical, and right now there is 9,022 square feet of vacant general office. So what we're proposing to do is essentially, we'll have one tenant that we would like to come in. It's a dental implant company, and they would really be taking two of the tenant spaces. So it would be taking one, taking over one of the general office spaces and the existing medical. So it really would be general office and medical converting really into one medical use. And so the medical use, I'm going to show you the next slide. So what we believe here is that the actual demand for medical use is less than what's required by the code. So when we were checking this out, because one of the questions that we had is why, why is there really, there's a significant surplus of parking spaces here? And one of the conclusions that, you know, that we drew in our analysis was that Fort Lauderdale has, excuse me, has a pretty high, a pretty stringent parking ratio for medical office use. So we've looked into some other municipalities in Broward County. So you can see that Coconut Creek is one per 200 or one per 250 under certain circumstances. Or Coral Springs is one per 250, Dana Beach one per 200, Hollywood one per 250, as you can see on the side, Oakland Park one per 300, and Pompano one per 200. So right now, Fort Lauderdale is a bit more stringent. So we think that that is one of the contributing factors of why we have a significant surplus of parking spaces. When they did their study, there was about 70, or 67, excuse me, extra parking spaces that were available. This is an aerial that was taken by a drone on October 11 at 11:00 a.m. So this is looking, this is the east corner, looking west towards the east and north property lines. And this is at 11 o'clock in the morning, and you could see that it's pretty much empty. Now, this is an aerial, also on October 11 at 11:00 a.m. It's giving a view north, so where the construction is for Fairfield Development, that where the, this is where the old Keith and Schnarr's building was demoed. And then in the background there, that's the MS, the multiple sclerosis building that's existing. So this just gives you an idea of the parking and what's existing there right now. So we have, I'm going to go right back to this slide. So I just want to spend a little bit more time on this slide. So in the center, you could see there's a swale, and there's cars that are parked along that swale. You can kind of see them under the trees. The owner of the adjacent property contacted me with concerns that, his concerns were that tenants might be parking there and walk across the swale to my client's property. So in having discussions with him, we, you know, being a good neighbor, we do not believe, based on our, on a parking study, that there'll be any parking issue or an issue with the number of parking spaces. But being a good neighbor, the owner of that property, Mr. Poliakoff, had asked for a chain link fence, if our client would put in a chain link fence to dissuade anybody from parking on his side and walking across the swale to my client's property. So he asked, and being a good neighbor, we agreed that we would put that on the record, that we made an agreement to, my client would put a chain link fence along the shared property line there, to give him some comfort that nobody's going to park there, and none of my client's tenants will park over there and walk over, because that will essentially just prevent them from doing that. There's also the development, as I'm sure you're aware, that is under construction and part of their site plan, which there's a copy that we provided with our PowerPoint presentation, which I can show you. They are, this is just another view, so you could see the construction. This cross-access area is going to be closed off by the adjacent development that's occurring. So cars won't be able to go in and out of there. But the concern was that, and this is another photo showing that it's being closed off. And this is their site plan. So they will be also, this adjacent property, this is the site plan that's been submitted to the city. They'll be adding landscape as part of their site plan that's been approved, and closing off that access point. So my client on the other side, their vehicles, their tenants, wouldn't be able to access it because it'll be closed off. And that's really it. We're here for questions.
Are there any questions for the applicant before we open up the floor to the public?
I do.
Go ahead, Stephen.
It was stated that no one showed up to the meeting? No opposition to your meeting that you held?
No, no one attended, but we did get a phone call from Mr. Poliakoff. And he expressed his concerns, as I was explaining, that he was concerned that our tenants were going to park, or were parking on his side and walking across the swale.
Okay. And Poliakoff, is that the attorney?
He is an attorney, and he's also the owner of that property.
Okay. Then, there's a, it sounds like there's a discrepancy, though, in your notice and your affidavit of the meeting. Did you realize that? Your affidavit says the 17th of September. I think the notice said the 16th, so.
Yes, we were, it was brought to our attention that there was a typo in the summary. The notice that went out, so that we conducted our public participation meeting on September 16th. It did occur on September 16th, excuse me, but the summary that was put together and submitted, there was a typo and said the 17th. So the meeting occurred on the 16th, and the notice said the 16th. It's just the summary, there was a typo.
Okay. And that, I think it was an actual affidavit, notarized affidavit.
There was an affidavit that was submitted that we did conduct the meeting.
And said the 17th, okay.
Yeah, it was a typo.
Surprising in order to-
But we resubmitted it.
Stake like that, okay.
Yes, it was resubmitted with the correct date.
As long as the meeting happened on the right time. Okay. There, let's see. I have a question about the parking calculations that you did. Would I speak? Let me just state it. The, you, and let me just summarize my question. You studied on a Tuesday and Thursday in June of what the traffic or what the parking looked like, and then applied a multiplier of 4% that simulates the heavy season, which would be our winter season, I think. Is it true that only 4, we only have 4% more people in Fort Lauderdale or during this winter season? It doesn't seem like that when you drive your car or try to go to restaurants or anywhere else.
It's my-
4%, but that, where did that come from?
It's my understanding that that is specific to Fort Lauderdale, that they do the multiplier in that regard. And my understanding from the, from the traffic engineers is that they really don't anticipate this, a dental use being a seasonal use, because that's something that is local residents that utilize it.
Okay. And how, those calculations, I did look at them, but I, there were a lot of numbers there. So I want, I'm going to ask a simple question, that what, how low did those calculations come out to? How much fluff is there to the limit, what you should, what you have there to what the calc, didn't the calc come out to about 137 spaces, and you have 204?
Yeah, and that's, that's-
Is that true?
When I saw that too, yeah, there's a significant number of surplus parking spaces. And that's actually why when we were sitting down, looking at it, like, wow, you know, because usually when you get a parking study, might, the surplus might be much closer to what the actual code requirement is. And I think our conclusion, you know, it's just what our analysis was, is that the parking ratio for the city of Fort Lauderdale is pretty stringent. One per 150 is pretty stringent compared to other municipalities that are close by. So we think that that is one of the contributing factors to the surplus of parking spaces.
Okay. So I questioned the 4% multiplier, but seeing that there's a big fluff there, there's a big slack number that you use it, that helps, that helps actually.
Julian speak to that. I think he might be able to give you a little bit more detail, because he was more involved in that, and I think he knows more of the-
Thanks. Is that a county, is that a county-wide multiplier? Is that what it is, or something, not just the city, or?
Yeah. Honorable board members, Julian Bobelef with Greenspan Martyr. So I had a discussion about, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I had a discussion with Carl Peterson about this. And so these are the FDOT numbers that they, that FDOT publishes. However, they are different for different areas of the county. They are countywide, but they are basically divided up into vertical sections. So the first section is east of US1, so of course that's the main snowbird area. So that's where you would experience the greatest seasonality. This particular area is between US1 and State Road 7. So you would expect there to be a little bit less seasonality there.
Okay, that makes sense, yes. I did see that. Thank you.
Any other questions? I've got a quick clarification question that you made during the presentation. You mentioned the traffic study by TRAVTEC.
Yes.
And then we just heard Mr. Peterson's name. So was it by TRAVTEC or by Carl Peterson?
Well, he and Joaquin Vargas are TRAVTEC.
I'm sorry?
He and Joaquin Vargas. Carl and Joaquin are partners at TRAVTEC.
Okay. So KVP Consulting is not, is that part of-
That's Carl.
Yeah, I figured that out by the initials, but, so that's all one entity?
So, yes, they work, they work together.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yep. Quick question. Do you have any-
Plexiglas between us, I can't tell where it's coming from. Comes from out there.
I know, it's hard to-
Hey, Mike.
Hi, John.
Do you know what the rent roll is like there now?
I do.
The occupancy rate? And who do you have in there? Some?
I have a history with this building. I do have a owner's representative here. So in a nutshell, there's law offices, there's marketing firms. This is where the Wells Fargo office space was, but Wells Fargo is vacated, except they do have an ATM that's still there that you can go through the drive-through. And I can let, if you need more specific-
Well, I'm curious, just because I know a little bit about the property, because I worked there. I worked for a group called 6400 Andrews, or, no, it was Architecture 6400.
Oh, okay.
It was Stiles-
Yeah.
Architecture Group. That was their creative name, Architecture 6400.
Right, and this is, the owners of the property is 6400 Building LLC. It's very, very creative.
So when we were there, there was a tenant there that had something to do with vacations, I think, and it was almost a call center. Are they still an occupant there?
Saying yes.
What's the name of that group?
Hi, board. Evan Rosenblatt with Peb Enterprises, but we are the owners of 6400 Building LLC. So Paramount Marketing, is that who you're referring to?
Nope. It was a vacation group.
They do, so it may be different, but that, because they do vacations there as well. But, you know, to Dina's point and what we were saying, so the only two vacancies are what we're applying for right now. Everything else is full right now. The mix, as you said, I mean, we've got law firms, we have Ring Central, which is the one that's got the building name on there. There's Herman Partners, which is an advertising group, you know, law firm, law firm, law firm. It's just, you know, that's why we have a lot of the empty spaces, it's just not heavily trafficked.
But where are you at right now? 80% occupied?
So it's about 9,000 of the vacancy right now, including the old bank space, which they've, you know, they've vacated, I think it was back in last March, I want to say. And then this space is 4,000 square feet on the second floor, so the tenant's actually taking that second space, and they're using a lab space on part of the bank space. So we'll only have actually 1,700 square feet left over. The lab space actually uses only about three employees total, so that's all that's going to be used in that one, so it'll be even lower. And so that's the only vacancies in the entire building, is 55,000 feet. And I also worked at Stiles, by the way.
So what percentage is that? So I don't have to do the math? Is that half the building is unoccupied right now?
No, no, no. So we've got 9,000. I'll do it real quick. I'll do the math. So only, it's 16% unoccupied now. And then the, so this tenant will take, it'll be 1,700 square feet left over, so you're talking under 5% remaining that would fill it. And we also had a letter, you know, from this tenant, just being a dental implant center, it's not your typical dental use with high turnover. These are hour-long procedures. There's only three dentists in there with support staff, so it's like eight employees at a time, and they, and like three patients at a time. So it's not your typical heavy use, turnover, high turnover type of use.
Yeah, and the reason I'm asking all these questions is because I worked there, and I remember when I was there, it was very difficult to find parking at the time. This is a long time ago. But the call center that was there was a high-density office, and I just wanted to be sure that they weren't as big a tenant as they had-
And I just wanted to be sure that they weren't as big a tenant as they had been in the past. Because when you look at the rent roll, you know, all those things make a difference. And I was surprised to see that that parking lot was so open on a Tuesday. And the only thing that explains is because you have a lot of vacancy right now. So that makes sense. That picture makes sense, you know, when I look at it. Um, I agree with you, though, as an architect, I see that all the time, that the higher requirements for medical. And it really changes from office to office. Some folks do run a lot of people through there. But, and like you're saying, in a surgical suite like that where you're doing dental implants, it may be a lot different. So I just was curious. So, thank you.
No problem.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think John brings up a good point. I mean, there's, you know, you could have an office that's a call center. And, you know, this is dental implants, but what if, you know, what if they go out? And then there's another tenant that backfills the space that does, I don't know, physical therapy or something more intensive. So I'm assuming that we, once we approve the use, then the use is approved in perpetuity and not specific to this tenant. Is that correct, staff slash?
Can this approval be tied to the tenant?
Or the, because it's a sub-use of medical, right?
It's, it's tied to the use. So if the tenant were to get replaced by the same type of use, that parking reduction can stand.
But when we say type of use, is, is, are we limiting that to medical or is there like a subset?
Yes. It's, it would be the medical office use.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll open the floor to public comment. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion.
I'm comfortable making a motion. I was up there today. There was a significant amount of parking in that lot. And I know it, it's 60%. You know, yes, it's going to be more, but there was a lot of parking. I just want to note for the staff and, and just say it's, I've noticed how many, since you've been working on this uptown area, we seem to have so many projects coming forward and that's a great thing. And so I'm comfortable making the motion to approve the parking reduction.
Give me one pause, make sure nobody else has a comment before you make a motion. Have Adam, Mary.
Oh, okay, so.
It's a pause.
That's a pause. Now I can do it? I'm looking back to my legal advisor back here.
Oh, okay. I was just asking if you're adopting the findings of fact in the staff report with the corrections made to the affidavit that had the incorrect date according to the applicant and the staff report conditions. Uh, there's one condition in there, um, and then the other condition stated on the record that the applicant will install a fence on the prop, shared property line with Mr. Keith Poliakoff. Is that acceptable to the applicant on the record, those conditions? The one condition in the staff report and the one you stated earlier?
Yes, one in the staff report and then also the chain link fence, yes.
Okay. Does, so does your motion include that, Mary?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Did you make a motion, Mary?
Do you want me to make it back? Yeah, I made a motion.
Mary's gonna make a motion.
Well, I, I, all right. So let me start again. I move that we approve the parking reductions with the findings of fact and the agreement to install a fence and make the change on the, or accept the change on the affidavit that it was the 16th instead of the 17th. Did I leave anything out?
And the condition that's already in the staff report.
And I guess.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
All right. Before we call the roll, Ms. Wallen, you want to read the resolution?
Yes. Resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a site plan level 3 development permit for a parking reduction for a change of use from 9,022 square feet of professional office to medical office for the property located at 6400 North Andrews Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the heavy commercial light industrial district, case number UDP S22031.
Thank you. Ms. Harmon, you want to call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Fertig?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
And Chair Weyman?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Next up, case number three, UDP Z22013.
Good evening, board members. Michael Ferrera, urban planner and case planner for this item. Uh, this item is part of the city's initiative to rezone the properties that are used as parks, open space and conservation areas to parks, recreation, open space. Uh, this particular item is for Cortez Triangle Park, which is located north of Cortez Street, south of Castillo Street, east of South Birch Road, and west of North Seabreeze Boulevard. The request is to rezone this property from planned resort development to parks, recreation and open space. I'll be here if you guys have any questions.
Was this an oversight from when we were reviewing these previously? I don't even know who to ask that question to, Ellis.
Yeah, so.
Did all those, those park designations, does this sound that same line?
Yeah, so what happened was is that the mail notice that went out for, for this rezoning, the leak, the location map and the legal description didn't match, it was incorrect. Um, so this is just cleaning that up. So we did redo the mail notice with the correct location map and legal description.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the city? At this time, we'll open it up for po, public comment. Is there anybody here to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close public and bring it back to the board, I would imagine, for a motion.
I move to approve case number UDP Z22013. As it meets the ULDR criteria.
And I'll second that with a thank you for doing this.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion before we vote on it? Ms. Harmon, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Fertig?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Chair Weyman?
Yes. Motion passes. Case number four, UDP Z22016. Start off with disclosures, John?
Yes, I'll be recusing myself as I'm being considered or have been considered for the architect for this project.
Okay, Mary?
I visited the site and I spoke with Mr. Crush.
Jay?
I spoke with the applicant's attorney.
Stephen?
Site visit and spoke with applicant's attorney.
Patrick?
I spoke with applicant's attorney.
Sherry?
I spoke with applicant's attorney as well.
And I spoke with the applicant's attorney as well. All right, Mr. Crush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Jason Crush with Crush Law. On behalf of the applicant, Water Tower Apartments, I have with me this evening the principal of Water Tower Apartments, Mr. Arthur Bartholomew. Um, this is a request to rezone the currently zoned property is RMM 25 to the Northwest Rack MUE zoning district at 628 through 642 Northwest 3rd Avenue. To locate you where you are, can you see this on your screens? Yes, okay. Um, this, you see the FEC line in Cistrunk. Um, the white building over on the lower right area is Cistrunk Marketplace. You can see the City of Fort Lauderdale Water Tower. This property is located directly west of the water tower and directly east of the church property, which came before you several months ago. Um, currently, as you all may or may not know, the underlying land use for this area is Northwest Regional Activity Center. Um, a land use plan amendment was done for this entire area back in early 2000s, probably in 2000, to change it to Northwest Regional Activity Center to revitalize this area and to, to foster redevelopment. Um, in 2015, the, um, the current rezoning was done of the properties along Cistrunk to Northwest Rack MUE to implement this land use plan amendment. And you'll see that the, the properties here along Cistrunk are zoned Northwest Rack MUE. The building here in between these two orange labels is the 613 building, which was done by Jeff Burns and his group, which was really the first, you know, downtown flagler villages-type building that was built west of the tracks to start the trend that we hope will happen and provide more housing stock for this area. It also goes up along the FEC lines to the junkyard over on the right-hand, upper right-hand side. You all, I don't know if you've seen it yet, but there is a project coming forward on that um, within this Northwest Rack MUE zoning district. It's a beautiful building if you haven't seen it already. As I said, the property directly to the west of us, we are in the yellow, is, was approved by you all in July and was approved by the city commission in the last, the previous to last commission meeting. Um, we want to continue that trend and the intent of the, um, the, the land use plan amendment and the rezoning and the Northwest Progresso Flagler Master Plan and its guidelines. Um, to give you an idea, and I, I know Mr. Baranco had asked a question about how the zoning would look after it was done. This is an excerpt from the city's GIS system, um, showing the existing zoning. And I added the yellow outline of our property. And it has already been, the purple, the dark purple is the Northwest Rack MUE zoning district. You'll see over on the left, this property was rezoned to it and pushed up. This property is the one that you all looked at in July, which has been rezoned. There were several others that were rezoned to Northwest MUE as well to bring this around. We think at some point, you know, this, the brown is B3, which is heavy commercial. And then the light purple is the I industrial zoning district. I know there's a lot of interest in doing some rezoning around here as well to change from this industrial to some of the mixed use that everyone likes to look at. This area here, just for your information, to give you context of what's going on in the neighborhood, this brown area where my cursor is, is the Thrive Art. Um, our planner, your Cine Planner, our planner, Nicholas Calagirós, did an analysis of our narrative and our presentation. And we, and agreed with our, what we set forth as far as meeting the criteria for the rezoning. And we agree with his staff report, obviously, um, that it is consistent with the future land use, consistent with the city's comprehensive plans, specifically, um, land use goal 2, objective 2.4, that encourages revitalization of redevelopment areas, which this is, it's in the CRA. It is zoned Northwest Regional Activity Center, I mean, I'm sorry, land use is Northwest Regional Activity Center and hopefully zoned Northwest Regional Activity Center. Um, second criteria is it will not adversely impact. Um, we believe that it is aligned with the neighborhood's goals and support redevelopment opportunities in the neighborhood. Not only will it not adversely impact, it will actually improve the area, changing it from not the best, highest and best use of properties in the area and hopefully push some of the, the mini-marts out. So the, if the land values increase, we're hoping some of the other uses that are undesirable do sell and get revitalized and turn this into a downtown, off-downtown neighborhood. Um, the third criterion is the character of the area proposes suitable for the uses. Um, by rezoning to this, today, we're not subject to the Northwest Rack, um, design guidelines. We rezoned to this property, it changes the zoning. It also makes it so when we come in for a site plan approval for a use on this property, we have to comply with the Progresso Flagler Northwest CRA. We have to comply with the Northwest Regional Activity Center design guidelines, which were vetted for, I don't know, Dwayne, 12 years. It, it, we, the city hired planners, the city had groups. Mary, I think you were probably on P&amp;Z when it came through in 2015. Um, we know it was a long and exhausting process with lots of community outreach to get to a point where everyone could agree what the corridor and what this area would look like. Um, there are different, there are, there's an east zone, there's a west zone, there's a northeast zone. Because what everyone wanted in the community was kind of different along Los Olas Boulevard. Kind, I mean, along Cistrunk, kind of like the Los Olas Boulevard Mobility Plan, which we know was, has different zones as well. Uh, we held a public participation meeting on September 7th. It was a Zoom meeting. We sent out notices. Um, there were several individuals that own properties around us, specifically some of the small townhouses to the east of us. They were very excited about the new projects coming in because now there's nothing for them to walk to or to go to. Walking up through an industrial area to get to Sunrise for any kind of use is not what they wanted. So they want the area to be redeveloped into something more pedestrian-friendly and walkability and things like that. We presented again at the, the Progresso Village Civic Association on September 19th. There were 20, 25 individuals from the Neighborhood Association there. They asked questions. Um, we informed them that when we come forward with a site plan, when we decide exactly what the building will look like if the rezoning takes, um, we would meet with them in the conceptual phase and of course, on our public participation phase, our DRC phase and moving forward. They did provide us with a letter of support for the rezoning and are excited to see it redeveloped as well. Um, I have copies of the support letter if any of you would like to have a physical copy. And I'll give a copy to Nick so that he has it. Um, if you all have any questions, we're here to answer. And respectfully request that you approve the rezoning.
Can we just add that to our disclosure? Because I know Ellis sent it out to all of us, the letter from the association.
As soon as I saw it, I thought the same thing. All right. Are there any questions for the applicant's attorney?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. What disclosure did you make?
The Progresso Village Letter of Support. All right. At this time, we'll open up the floor to anyone who wishes to speak on this item. Seeing none, we'll close public participation, bring it back to the board. Comments?
I'd like to say that I walked the area and, and clearly, as, as Attorney Crush, Counselor Crush says, uh, to the east, there's some nice townhomes. The, the area is clearly in transition. It's beginning right now. And it looks like what's, you know, it's time to, to continue it there. I do have a question about the 613 building. I think it has affordable housing or workforce housing and includes that. The city touts it. Is there anything, are there any requirements in Northwest Rack to include any of that? And do you, or do you intend to do any of that also?
There are not requirements. There, the 613 building, I think, got $8 million in CRA funds. If we got $8 million in CRA funds, I think we do affordable housing. So we will be seeking some kind of assistance from the CRA funding mechanism if we can meet all the timelines, because it does sunset here in the next couple of years. Um, and there will be a requirement, if we seek CRA funds, to either employ folks from the neighborhood or to provide some type of housing restriction. I think our intent is market workforce. I mean, not, this isn't obviously downtown rents as we move west. We hope that it's downtown rents in 15 years, but today, I think in the construction, it will be more of a workforce type.
That's what I meant. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none, somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve with all the facts and findings and, um, conditions and anything else. But yes, I think this is great. This is second project in this block in, in just a few months. So it's kind of interesting watching it happen. Interesting, Steve, your comments about walking. Anyways, that's my motion.
So is that a motion to approve?
Yeah.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Patrick, second. Thank you. Any further discussion before we take it to a vote? Ms. Harmon?
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco? Oh, sorry, abstained. Ms. Fertig?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Chair Weyman?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Up next, case number UDP T22006. The applicant is the City of Fort Lauderdale. Ms. Logan?
Hi, good evening. I just have a short presentation, just so you have this in front of you while I'm talking. Um, we do have two text amendments in front of you tonight. So I'll cover the first one, um, on your agenda, which is an amendment to section 4727, 7 of the ULDR. And this is pertaining to notices, um, specifically for historic designation. This is something that the Historic Preservation Board has specifically requested. And it did go in front of the city commission as a communication. And they authorized us to move forward with the preparation of this amendment. Um, it does provide an additional sign notification in front of the property prior to a designation application appearing before the Historic Preservation Board. And it provides, um, an additional mail notice to a registered agent in the specific case of when you have, um, a property that's owned by a limited. that's owned by a limited liability company or a corporation. So it's rather straightforward. I'm here if you have any other questions.
Same vein, the board, have any questions? Does this apply only if the applicant is the owner of the property?
It would apply in all cases, whether or not the applicant is the owner.
So a neighbor who has no interest in the property can make application or what have you to create a historic designation on his neighbor's property?
No, we don't have that ability within our code any longer. That was changed a couple of years ago. So there's only a few options to initiate a designation application. One is through a motion by the Historic Preservation Board, another is a motion through the City Commission. The property owner themselves can designate a property or their property. If it is a historic district, it would be a simple majority of property owners that would have to come forth with an application. And we do have an option for a nonprofit organization that has a vested interest in historic preservation to prepare an application. And that would be the only time where it wouldn't involve a property owner or the city.
Question?
Yes.
If an application is made by someone other than the property owner, as is sometimes the case, is the property owner required to keep the signage on the property?
Maybe I'll defer to the city attorney's office.
The signs go to the corner, so there's like a separate sign section. Ella, what section is that? There's like a separate section in the code for signs, but it's at the corner. But yeah, we'd have to keep it there where, where it states in the code. But the only other type of people that can be applicants are the nonprofit organization that's been in business of historic for five years, the city, and then it would be a simple majority of the property owners, so it's not a random person.
Right, so let's say the Broward Trust for Historic Preservation makes an application on, on a property, and is there anything, and then, so the notice goes up on the property, I'm assuming the city would put that signage there?
That would be the applicant. The city will provide the sign and then they pay, of course, but the applicant doesn't.
What would, what would prevent the actual property owner, who in certain circumstances may not want the property to be historic, from removing the sign and creating an issue in that part of the process?
Well, anyone can remove signs right now. Some people steal signs, they, they do that all the time, so it's no different than any other application that comes before here and the, and the City Commission. Anyone can remove a sign at any time, so we can't run them down and say stop.
No, I mean, is there, is there like a law or like, is there some type of procedure?
I mean, if you damage a sign that belongs to someone else, that's criminal mischief, but I'm not sure if anyone wants to press charges or go that far, but at this point in time, we have sign notice when the applications come before P&amp;Z as well as the City Commission. So it's literally, we're giving them the same notice that people get when they come to this board and the City Commission. So we're actually doing something more than what was required before, sorry.
To sort of follow up on Jay's comment, they would be trespassing by putting that sign on a piece of property against the will of the property owner, correct?
Well, no, let me see what the sign section says. Let me go to it. Where does it say in the right of way? It's supposed to be facing the right of way. So it's saying that it has to be posted on or near the subject property as close as possible. That's in section 4727, 2E, and it says, "If the applicant is not the owner of the property that is a subject of the application, the applicant shall post a sign on or as near to the subject property as possible, subject to the permission of the property owner, where the sign is located, in the location and the right of way if approved by the city." So if the property owner says no, they have to just post it as close as possible to the property. So possibly in, near to the city's right of way, you know.
So you can put these signs in the right of way?
Well, I would say like in the swale kind of area, just as close as possible to the property, so, yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one that may be very naive and basic. I've attended an historic board preservation meeting.
I'm sorry.
And I thought that, that publics, the public do speak at those meetings, so I'm, I'm curious as to why there were, there was never a sign placement. It looks like from the amendment here, we never put signs out before that. How do you reach out to the public before, to attend a historic preservation meeting to decide if it's going to be?
I don't know why it wasn't done before, but we're here now, so we're trying to fix it.
No, but they, you are required, there are signs that are put up. This is just, this is prior to?
The Historic Preservation Board meeting, so it wasn't required before for the designation of the, designation of properties.
It is currently required before the City Commission meeting, so it does go as a sign notification prior to that meeting, that's already in the code. This is just adding an additional sign notice prior to the Historic Preservation Board meeting, because it's a two-step process for a designation application.
So I'm just curious at how, how public people showed up, knew to show up to the HPB meeting, basically on something, because I did see some people speaking there at those meetings, but they found out other ways through emails or other word of mouth, not from a sign.
Yeah, there's other notice provisions there.
And there's no 300-foot provision of that, that you reach out or something with a letter? No. At the HPB, okay. All right, I just want to make sure I understood it, I'm surprised.
Yeah, we have newspaper, mail notice requirements, other, this was the only thing that was missing, so.
We do mail, okay.
I think this is good, I think this is good to have this consistency and it came from birth, so. Thank you for bringing it to us.
Anyone else have a comment? Somebody want to make a motion?
Okay, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Who seconded, you, Jay?
Jay.
Any further discussion before we call the roll? Ms. Harmon?
Mr. Schuckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Furtick?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Chair Weyman?
No.
Six to one, pass.
Okay, motion passes. My screen went away, bear with me just a second. When you try to be so smart to not have to carry paper around, sometimes this happens. All right. The next item, case number UDP T22007, again, the city of Fort Lauderdale. Are you presenting this one as well, Tricia?
Yes, I am.
I'm sorry, I just have a question. I, I don't remember, did we ask anyone from the public if they wanted to speak on that one? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Yes, we opened and closed it.
Thank you.
Yes, this is another proposed text amendment related to historic preservation, and this is to section 472411 of the ULDR. This is a text amendment that was also requested and initiated by the Historic Preservation Board and is primarily to establish the ability to designate a thematic historic district. And a thematic historic district is something that's slightly different than our traditional historic district that already exists in the code, where it does allow for a designation of a grouping of buildings that are not continuously geographically located together, but are connected through a common theme, which could be through architecture, the architectural style, the design of the building, an architect itself, an event, various things could establish the rationale for why you would be able to designate a thematic district. One example that is something that was applied statewide is to women's buildings that are located throughout the state, and those are under a thematic district umbrella. So it's a consistent theme based on the use and the, the original, or the origination of that type of building. And so this was initiated by the Historic Preservation Board. It did go to the City Commission as a communication, and they did support the request to move forward with the preparation of this amendment. We did bring it back to the Historic Preservation Board in August for their review of the proposed text that's in front of you tonight, and they did recommend approval of the proposed amendment. And just as a broad overview of what's included in the text amendment, of course, it, it does establish that ability to designate properties within a thematic historic district. We included several new definitions as part of the code, and that is mostly related to designating a thematic historic district. We also made a few other modifications within the code and ordinance while we were there, so modifications to the overall historic designation process, just to further clarify that and provide additional structure. We also provided some updates to our criteria that's included in our certificates of appropriateness section, and that's when we review any, any requests for modifications or new construction within a historic district or for a historic landmark. And that's just to clean up some of the language that hasn't been addressed or looked at for a long time, so we wanted to make sure it was aligning with our citywide design guidelines, which are a separate document. We also provided language and update, updated language to our administrative review process, and that was specifically to cite elements within historic districts and for historic landmarks, so staff can sign off on some of the requests that come through our office through permitting on a day-to-day basis, and that just assists property owners to move through the review process a little quicker, rather than going to the board. And then we had to update the code to reference a couple of new state statute sections that do affect historic preservation regarding timing of how we review applications that come before us, and, and then we had just several miscellaneous edits just to clean up the code in general. So I, I'm here if you have any other questions, and I'm not sure, Shari, did you want to mention any?
Anybody have any questions for Tricia?
I do have a question for Trish.
Go ahead, John.
So, hi, Trish, I'm over here.
Yes.
How are you?
Good.
So in an area that's not currently designated historic, let's say some random neighborhood, I'll call it random neighborhood in Fort Lauderdale, and there's a block of houses, and on that block, there are a couple of houses, and the historic board takes it under consideration and says, well, we've got these two houses, and they're thematically historic because of this commonality, whatever it might be, and they designate a block, is that what I'm understanding? So that, maybe that block or maybe a couple of blocks in that area would be designated?
It could be. If it's contiguous within just a couple of blocks and there's enough properties within it, it may qualify for a traditional historic district. If the, the area has 100 properties and only three or four, you know, are of a certain theme, and then that would be qualifying for a thematic historic district. But it doesn't necessarily have to be limited to a couple of blocks or a particular neighborhood. You could think about it citywide as well, or, you know, an entire area that would be considered a neighborhood association. Something that we're working on right now is a citywide architectural resource survey, where we're going through each, basically civic association in each neighborhood and conducting a thorough architectural resource survey to provide an overview of what properties within these districts may qualify for historic designation. And that gives us a good basis of information of what is there currently, what's the history of that area, and so it's not just a random selection of which properties may be eligible for this type of designation. It's something that is well thought out. Currently, we're getting grant funding usually every year to conduct two of these surveys each year, and they're available on our website, and they are communicated with each of the neighborhood associations when we do conduct those surveys. So the information is out there.
So a follow-up question on that. So let's take one block, just to keep things small.
Yeah.
And we had two houses that have this thematic commonality, and we create a thematic district, is that what we're saying? Is that correct?
Yes.
And then, in that thematic district, would there be any limitations set to the adjacent landowners who don't have a historic home?
Not within a thematic historic district. It would only apply to the, the properties that are, would be called thematic resources, which are the properties that are identified as eligible for designation.
So I'm, the reason I keep asking questions is why would we designate the entire block a district if only two houses are really affected by that?
You generally wouldn't. If you're designating a historic district, you would want a substantial amount of properties to be identified, what we call as contributing to the historic district, meaning they do have a representation of what is significant about that area, and they do represent the historic context in which the area was designated for. So if you're designating a neighborhood of all Victorian homes, then you have some modern homes mixed in, and, you know, maybe 100, there's 100 homes total, you have 80 Victorian homes, 20 would be deemed as non-contributing. They would still follow some of the regulations that are set forth for the, the area and neighborhood, the district as a whole, but they wouldn't have as much weight placed on any request for exterior alterations as where for a historic property, for a contributing property, we would be interested in maintaining the appearance from the right of way to make sure that it's, any alterations or modifications are done appropriately where they're complementing and maintaining that historic significance over time.
So if I were in a thematic district, but my home was not historic, would I have to go to the historic board?
No.
Staff could do that, then? Staff could just say, oh, it's?
Well, it wouldn't be identified. It wouldn't be something that we would have purview over, so.
If I was in a thematic district, though?
If you're not identified as a thematic resource within a thematic district, like, you can, there could be a boundary of a block, and there's 20 houses on that block, two are identified as thematic resources. Only those two thematic resources would be under review.
And if they're next door to me, I wouldn't have to get a letter of appropriateness from the board?
No.
Okay. It's weird that we're calling it a district, but it doesn't really apply to anybody else in the district.
Yeah, it's not, it's, that's why it's different than a regular historic district. It's broader.
And earlier, did you suggest that maybe it could be another neighborhood that gets brought in under the same umbrella because of the thematic nature of the home or whatever in that neighborhood, and if the district isn't big enough, it can envelop both of them?
Well, it depends on the theme, and we don't have any examples just yet.
And there's no limit to themes, right? We can keep?
There's no limit, per se, to themes, but it does have to establish a historic context for why it would be eligible for designation. So if you're talking about a specific architect, then you'd want to establish, you know, what makes that architect significant, what types of architecture would you be looking for. We also have regulations as far as our designation is concerned to look at the integrity of the buildings that we're designating as well. So we need to make sure that they have, have the appearance that they were intended to have in their initial design. They haven't been modified over time where you can no longer recognize them for what they are originally intended to appear as and what their original design was. So you may have, you know, 10 buildings built by the same architect, designed by the same architect, but five of them have been modified so drastically that you can't really recognize them for what they were originally. So they wouldn't really qualify for designation any longer. You would only be focused on the five that still maintain that appearance.
And the five could be located in five different locations?
It could be, yeah. It could be maybe all on the beach, or, you know.
And the overall purpose of this is going to do what, for, I mean, just create?
It's just another option for designation. The Historic Preservation Board had a discussion related to properties along federal highway, and they were looking at modern buildings, modern architecture that were located between Sunrise and Oakland Park, and so there was a discussion about, you know, there isn't enough. And so there was a discussion about, you know, there isn't enough of that type of building, that typology, in that area to warrant a historic district. But, you know, if you thought of it as a thematic historic district, meaning, you know, there's 10 modern architecture-style buildings in that area, in that region, would that qualify as a thematic historic district? We didn't pursue a study, so I can't say one way or another, but that's how the conversation started, rather than taking them through individually as historic landmarks.
Right. Okay.
Is this something being done in other cities that you have kind of borrowed your?
There are other cities that do this. Locally, City of Miami has it in their regulations that they allow for a thematic historic district. There's a couple other municipalities within the state of Florida that do it. City of Coral Gables has something similar, but that's not what they call it. But it is something that is done at a national level as well for the National Register, where they do allow for this type of designation. They call it a multiple resource designation, where it's thematically a collection of buildings.
I have another question.
By the way.
I see that you sent an email to Mary Peliquin of the Council for Lauderdale Civic Associations requesting comments, questions, and did you get anything back? I don't see anything.
No, I didn't.
Okay. Thanks.
Have you done a presentation for them?
No, I offered, and I didn't receive a response.
Anyone else? At this time, I'll open up the item to the public. Mr. Crush, you have a comment?
Mr. Chair, thank you for your time. Jason Crusher, Crush Law. I think Mr. Gannon's point that this go to the neighborhoods and have public participation, and it did not, I think it's not ripe. I think it does need to go back. It needs to have some type of outreach. I don't think anyone has identified what this is. I did watch the Historic Preservation Board meeting the night that it occurred. There were comments, and Tricia alluded to it, that you could, and to Mr. Bronco's point, so you could take a property on Broward, take a property on Sunrise, take a property on Commercial, take a property on the beach, and if they were all constructed by the same architect that we determined may be a historic architect, you would call that a thematic district. My concern about adjacent properties having to go to HBB because of that were the same as Mr. Bronco's. I don't see anywhere in the code where it excludes those because it is, it would be an abutting property to a historically designated property. Also, applicant is a simple majority, even in a thematic district. So if, Mike, if your house was with Mary's house, with John's house, and with Jay's house, you would only need a simple majority of you vote to designate that thematic district. I think some of the language in here is super vague about what you can designate it as. I mean, historic event, significant persons, architectural style, architectural characteristics, or architectural types. We have a client that owns 45 mid-century-ish modern properties on the beach, none of which have been designated, some that may be identified in the resource guide. There are other properties there. We would be concerned if someone were to, a simple majority of other properties wanted to designate that as a thematic district. Why not go and do it the right way? You either do it as a historic district, or you go individually. To designate five properties as a thematic district because they have a gable roof that's purple? Go and do it the right way and individually analyze each one of those. I don't think the neighborhood associations or folks, especially Coral Ridge, they don't realize, I mean, there's a lot of houses in Coral Ridge that are 40-something years old right now, and they have a very specific design, the way that they were built. In six years, someone's going to say, I don't really want a three-story house next door to me. I'm going to file an application or get a nonprofit to file an application to designate that, or do a thematic district. I would use Mr. Bronco, but he hasn't been building single-family houses long enough. But we all know Gus Carbonell. Gus Carbonell is a prolific architect in this town, has been building very distinctive townhouses for 30-some-odd years. He's the gentleman who changed us from standard barrel tile townhouses to kind of a more modern design. Someone were to decide that all Gus Carbonell townhouses should be in a thematic district, and you only needed a simple majority to designate that, you could end up with a lot of things that are designated historic. What I'm unclear on, too, Tricia, is if you have five properties or all five of those properties analyzed for their contributing nature, say they were designed by a architect, Gus Carbonell, John Bronco, would they be in that group just because they were designed or constructed by that architect or that builder? Not saying that it's a distinct architectural style, not saying that it's a distinct architectural design, but that architect. I think there needs to be more discussion about this. I think that, like any other code change, there needs to be a presentation to folks that are going to ask these questions. I mean, nobody I talked to knew anything about this. If you do pass this and move it forward to city commission, there'll be a lot more people at city commission because we'll rattle the chains. I know that Tricia's been working on this for a long time, but I just don't, I don't think it's ready. I did watch the Historic Preservation Board meeting, and I think even the board members are kind of confused about some of the topics in this proposed ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Do you have a question for him, Mary?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to pick up on a point. I'm concerned this didn't go to the council and that there hasn't been any public meeting to discuss it. So I would like to, Tricia, is it possible to have a public meeting? To give people an opportunity to understand what you're doing, because this seems very different from some of the other things we've discussed. And if it is, then I'm going to move to defer.
You know, we did offer to make a presentation, and we didn't get a response back.
But sometimes we just do things here. We let neighborhoods know that we're going to be talking about doing this and how it would impact them in their neighborhood if it were to pass. And then, and I know you could do that, and nobody could show up, or you could do that and the room would be full, but I personally think that's a step that we need to do to have public participation in this process of writing this. So I would like to defer pending that kind of a meeting.
Let's finish up the meeting, and then you can make the motions you want and go from there. Is there anyone else from the public wants to be heard? Any more questions for Mr. Crush before we close the public portion? Public portion's closed, brought back to the board. Any further discussion above what Mary was talking about?
Chair, some clarification. So this would be in lieu of a motion on the matter specifically? I mean, I just, I want to just say on the record that I find this is very, very broad in scope, and not just in its lack of detail, but even concept. I think there's way too much possibility of impairing property rights. I think it's way too broad, and I won't support it in any way.
And I would just say to that, I think that if something were taken to the public and you got an interest in it, that it could be narrowed according to what you heard that night. But if you haven't even had any public participation other than advisory board, that's concerning to me. So I just, it might be really valid after everybody in the community hears it, weighs in, and makes suggestions on how it could be changed or adapted to their areas, but we don't really know that, so.
So is that a motion? That's what I'm trying to-
I was going to move to defer, and for at least two months to give them time to have a public participation meeting, and then see if we get something that's more clear.
I'm not so sure that I want to see this board as the architect of how they get to the goal line. I agree that it's premature. I think for us to sit up here and say, you ought to go do this, you ought to do that, this is what they do. So, you know, to me, it's easier to say that this is denied and see what they come back with as something, they've hurt us, they know what we want, but to give them 60 days to come back with something, then they may be missing something else. I think it's up to them to figure out what the right moves are.
I just feel like this came to us from the Historic Preservation Board, and I don't really know why there wasn't some process there, but if that were the case, give them the chance to, I have concerns about, I think we're all sitting here with concerns, so give them a chance to fix the concerns before we vote no, and then if we're not, you know, we don't feel satisfied with that, then we can do it. But I'll go either way. I just would like to give them a deferral and-
I understand the purpose of the Historic Preservation Board and what it's trying to do. I, as you may tell, have a problem with the overreaching of being able to saddle other people and/or their properties against the will of that property owner. You know, initially, it's, okay, we want to designate your house or your building as a historic site, and now we're saying because Joe and Bob live in your neighborhoods with a Bronco-style house, we're going to designate, I mean, this is getting out of control a little bit for me. You know, I think back to, I don't know who said it, but either do a historic designation for a whole neighborhood, Selbo Bend, or identify a specific unit, Stradahan House, and beyond that, you know. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Could I just make a comment? Shari, could I just make a comment? On page 21 of the ordinance, you have the criteria under which they're able to designate a thematic district. And so if you look, it has a list of criteria. It's not just, hey, we have the same architect. That was the definition provided on page nine, but that is not the criteria that needs to be met. A definition is different from the criteria. So in order to actually prevail on a application for a thematic district, you'd have to meet the criteria on page 21, and if applicable, page 22 of the ordinance. So I just wanted to clarify that, that it's not just simply, hey, we have the same architect that's making it a lot more simple than it is. They have to meet the criteria that is on page 21 and 22, and there's a list there.
Yes, sir.
That's one or more of those criterion must be met, and those criterion are pretty broad as well, so.
Well, that's the criteria that we currently have, and it's not changing. And so I'm not sure what exactly is broad about it, but this is currently the criteria that we have, and we've been quite successful using it. But that has, that has less to do with a criticism of the thematic district than it is a separate criteria that we already have for a historic district as it is. So that the criteria remains the same, whether it's a thematic or a historic district. That's the point.
Is there a motion pending, Chair?
Not yet.
I'm going to defer, but I don't think anybody seconded it, so.
I have a different, just comment on the-
Well, if you're making a motion to defer-
I was making a motion to defer, because I mean, I don't know that we're going to fix anything in here tonight, and I hate to just vote something down because my fear is that they're going to take that as a don't bring it back as opposed to give them one opportunity to fix it. We did this about a year and a half, two years ago, and then we ultimately adopted what you came back with, if I recall, Tricia. So I don't know if you've received comments tonight which have been helpful and, or not, but I would just like to give them the opportunity, and to do that, we have to defer.
Yeah. If I could just make a comment for them to consider, well, as they go through their process, if it is to be deferred?
Well, I can, I could just tell you that if we defer it tonight and they don't have a public participation process, then I'm still not going to feel comfortable, even if they change a lot of stuff in here, because I think this is a public issue, not one that we should just be weighing on without any.
Nor should we rush to judgment in 60 days.
Yeah, no, okay, well, I'll defer indefinitely.
And they'll bring it back, and if they don't hear us, then they'll bring it back again, but. So Mary has a motion to defer. Is there a second?
Could I just ask for some guidance on the public participation? Because I know that staff mentioned that they requested a meeting and that they haven't responded, so do you have any specific neighborhoods? You want us to meet with the entire city? We just want some guidance, because it's not related to one specific neighborhood. This is something that they can do all of them.
I understand that. So let me just say, I think when Jason was speaking, he brought up some good examples of things, but I'm just going to make it personal in my neighborhood or in where either my office is located or my home. I can see things that could fit into categories. I believe if the council doesn't want to have the program, that's fine, but frequently you all have meetings here that you advertise to all of the associations, and then you let them know that this is under consideration. If they have input, they can come. And then there's been some opportunity to communicate with the public without having just a flat-out no.
So just give notice to all the associations that, that's what, the civic associations that are recognized by the city and to have meetings with them? I just want to make sure that I write that down.
Well, I would expand that to other condo presidents and all.
Condo?
I would be very broad, and I would advertise it in a lot of places.
I don't think it'd be difficult to advertise it to every neighborhood association. Not that you have to go meet with them one-on-one, but to your point-
No, you just call them here, they can come, or they cannot. And if you get everybody here and they're-
With as enamored as everybody is with Zoom meetings, you could have 80,000 people on one Zoom and bang it out.
That's true. There should be something. I just am not comfortable.
Absolutely.
I agree with the whole public outreach, but I also think that while we defer, we should see if the board has any other comments on the actual proposed changes that they can, that can be considered prior to coming back to us rather than them come back to us and then we suggest those comments.
What I handed out, sorry, I never said it, was just stylistic changes that I saw, so that's my little pink PowerPoint, just stylistic stuff, sorry.
Okay, so we're back to, Mary has a motion to defer out there. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by John. Any further discussion?
Yeah, my own comment.
Well, hang on, let me just clarify. A motion to defer for how long?
I mean, three months? I don't know. How much time do you need? I don't think one month is enough, so, because I don't think that's enough to solicit.
I think we could say three months.
I think that's realistic, three months.
Okay, three months.
That brings us into season when a lot of other folks will be here, too. I think that's, that sounds good.
That's what I-
It brings us into the season of December and the winter. Also, there'd be more folks here as well.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Three months is good all the way around. It's enough time to get it out, get responses, and also there'd be more people in the area.
You want to be date-specific and have it come back in the February of 2023?
That's fine. And I just also want to say to people, like, I think outreach to the legal community and others who could be impacted. I mean, I don't want to just see civic associations, this needs to be talked about.
That's why I would try to stay away from telling them how to get back to us. Let them do their job. They know who they need to talk to.
All right, well, I assume we set February, and if it hasn't happened, then.
So we have a motion to defer until February of 2023. John, do you accept her 2023?
Yes.
John Bronco seconds it. Any further discussion?
Are we going to submit some sort of comments to them as to what we didn't like about it?
Better attend the meeting.
I'm sorry?
You should attend the meeting.
It'll be a presentation, then we attend the meeting, and people have comments. Okay. Are we going to register anything saying that we're uncomfortable with how it affects other properties that are not designated in the district? Or we aren't going to say anything about that? It's at the meeting, right? That's something that would come up, then?
I don't know how they do it.
Assistant City Attorney Dean Wayne Spence. So at this moment, you have a motion on the table to consider a deferral. You're not considering comments at this time. You'll have a time when the item comes back to consider comments and make your recommendations as a local planning agency on the item.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. We have a motion second to defer until the February 2023 meeting. Ms. Harmon, if you'll call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Ms. Bartik?
Yes.
Mr. Metteig?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
No.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Chair Wayman?
No.
Five to two.
I believe next up, we have communication to the City of Commission. Does anybody have anything they want to communicate to the city, Jay?
You know, I, no, I just want to say, I sometimes feel it's useless. I mean, we got a memo back from the city manager recommended against our communication last month. I didn't listen, bother to listen to the discussion. And my point, and I wanted to mention this, was if there was a committee that was handling this, I would have wondered why they weren't consulted before that motion was brought to us last month. consulted before that motion was brought to us last month on the docs and weighed in, as we do many times with the waterway issues. They go to Marine Advisory Board before they come to us, so we can hear what they have to say. So, you know, my disappointment in reading that was not that, you know, maybe you're taking care of everything with sustainability or with Marine Advisory Board, but that they were not presented with this information before it was brought to us, so we could hear what they had to say. And if you, if, on the other hand, you didn't present it to them, because they're not considering what we need to have in the ULDR to address sea level rise, well, then, then I think that it was a bad decision to not move ahead with the task force.
So is that what you want to communicate to the City Commission? They made a bad decision?
Well, the committee, I don't know what the commissions are.
Didn't they add sea level rise to a board that we already have, like the Sustainability Board?
They basically were saying that we already have two boards which are addressing those issues. But I'm wondering why we even had something come to us that didn't go to those boards before they came to us to tell us what they thought. Like, Historic Preservation Board is very good about that.
Yeah. It sounded, it looked like they're changing the enacting legislation for the Sustainability Board to include that. So hopefully, in the future, when we get something like that, it would go to them first, right?
Well, I, well, I think, having listened to the City Commission's comment on the communication, I think there might have been, well, the Mirror flat-out said he didn't understand what the communication was. So I think their impression was broader than the intention of your communication, which is a board to look at the overall issue of sea level rise versus what you all were talking about, which was the Title Barrier Ordinance that was before you. So the context of your comment wasn't before the City Commission, when they commented on that. So it is true that the Sustainability Advisory Board reviews sea level rise issues, and that is the comment that was addressed by the city manager and the comment that was addressed by the City Commission, that we have a board that deals with sea level rise issues. And we do, Dr. Gasman is the regionally-recognized expert in this area, dealing with the actual ordinance. So I don't know if that clarifies for this board, the context of the manager's comments and the, and the commission's comments as I perceive them to be. But I think that's what was lost in translation, I guess.
Okay, well, if there's a board that does it, if they can.
My point would be, if there's a board that does it, my point would be that this would have gone to them before it came to us to see that it complied with what they thought, so we could have gotten their input and not wasted our time with some of the things that, so.
So, and that goes to the context of the actual ordinance. So ordinance was dealing with Title Barrier Infrastructure. And so it wasn't dealing with sea level rise. It went to the appropriate board, which was the Marine Advisory Board, that deals with those type of issues with our waterways.
Okay, I guess we would just agree to disagree that water, that the issue of water overall is not related to sea level rise. So I think there are a lot of communities that are dealing with it.
That's not what I'm saying, at all.
I, I, my, the broader question was, are we, what are we as a city doing to make sure that we have a plan that is prepared, on our comp plan or ULDR, that is, that is ensuring that whatever we're doing as a city is being, you know, put into that. So I don't know. But I, that's my thought. I don't have anything new, because.
And Mary, I totally agree with you, because I saw that memorandum that went to commission. And they're like, well, P&amp;Z didn't like it, because they wanted this or that, but staff disagrees, and, you know, whatever. And I don't even know, we should be talking about seawalls. We don't talk about the city's speed limit. We don't talk about, you know, trash pickup. That's somebody else's problem. I mean, seawalls, as far as development rights and zoning and planning, I don't think that it's, it's part, or should be under our purview. If it's such a broad issue, you know, we should be talking about zoning and setbacks and heights and densities. You know, the seawall and keeping the water back from the ocean seems like a bigger picture thing, and maybe we're not the board to be looking at that.
So it's an amendment to the ULDR dealing with the height of that structure on the developments of our property.
Well, again, there's, there's plenty.
And it's an issue that's outlined in the comprehensive plan, which you, as a local planning agency, are responsible for ensuring that our code implements.
It's at the edge of a property, and it's to control something at the edge of your property, which seems to me, a roadway, a sidewalk's at the edge of my property, it has nothing to do with me as landowner. Maybe we're the wrong board to review this thing. It's in that gray area. I just don't see how it, it's really an issue for us to look at in the first place. We're not experts in that. That's something we kept harping on at the meeting. I don't think the people who've reviewed it before us are expert at it. And that was my point. The Army Corps of Engineers, they're a bunch of clowns. They destroyed the Everglades. And that's the experts that were presented to us in saying that, you know, creating bigger seawalls is better. I don't think it does. I think it's going to create more problems for everybody in the neighborhood who doesn't have a seawall and can't afford a seawall. So to me, I thought it was way over my head, way, maybe somebody else felt comfortable voting on that, but that's the reason we did what we did. We are not experts in that field.
Well, I felt comfortable with it, because I made the motion. I just want you to know I didn't just arbitrarily do it. But I feel comfortable with it, and I understand why it came. But my point, I guess my point, and maybe I'm not phrasing it well, is if there was a current board which reviews these matters and provides advice to us, such as the Marine Advisory Board does on waterway issues, and the Historic Preservation Board does on historic issues, then if there's that board, why didn't this go to them first, so we could have gotten their recommendation to adopt it? And I would just say, that was, I think we were talking about creating a new board that would review things in that context and have the knowledge to send it forward to us as a local planning agency. And anyways, I'm not going to hold you here any longer, but.
No, you're not, but Mr. Hessel is, because he's got an update for us on the units for the good of the city.
Oh, good.
Keep it under five seconds. You'll be our hero.
I'll keep it quick. Good evening. Jim Hessel, Principal Urban Planner, here to present an update to the unit allocation comparison table that you see on the screen was presented to you all back in, I believe, July. So it should look very familiar. The difference is that there is one line item on the bottom that was added in regards to the county land use policy, 2.16.4, which will allow for additional dwelling units, affordable housing, workforce housing units throughout the city. That's getting adopted, I believe, in December. And that's part of the county land use plan, and we have a code amendment to our Unified Land Development Regulations to align with that sometime around the similar December timeframe, maybe a little bit early on adoption. So the table that's on the first slide should look familiar. As I said, this was presented to the Planning and Zoning Board back in July. It outlines the different approval levels for allocation of residential units, RAC units, and FLEX units. You can see on the screen, for instance, that the downtown RAC is listed there, but also listed is the city FLEX zone, which is the Unified FLEX zone, and how those units are allocated by the approving body. The X that is indicated in red is subject to a city commission call-up. So that's what the X in red color means. So the next slide, I believe, we get into more detailed information on the different regional activity center unit availabilities. We're starting with downtown, and there's two different unit pools in the downtown that have available units, 2006 and 2016. You can see those numbers are in red. And the total units on the bottom table give you an overview of the units allocated in downtown, including FLEX units that have been allocated to downtown and affordable housing units. Next slide has the other regional activity centers in the city, the northwest, south, and the beach. As you can see, all of them have available units, with northwest having the most available RAC units. I did add the TRIPS summary to the beach RAC, because that's important, because the beach regional activity center entitlements are tied to two things, the unit allocation and TRIPS. So I just wanted to give you an overview of the TRIPS that are remaining.
Jim, a quick question on the last slide. Just to be clear, there's only 506 units left in downtown.
In the RAC, downtown RAC entitlements, yes.
Yeah. So only two more projects, call it, of 253 units each can get approved before, before what?
So that's with the RAC units. So we still have FLEX units. So you'll see at the presentation is a FLEX table. So Unified FLEX, so how we've been allocating FLEX does regional activity centers in the corridors based on Unified FLEX policy map. So that's citywide and also in the regional activity centers. So you can see what's totally permitted and what we've been allocated to date and what's pending. Pending means projects that are under review by the Development Review Committee right now. So that's what the pending column is for. So you can see the numbers are pretty, pretty high there. So how do we move forward? So how are we moving forward? We are implementing the county policy 2.16.4, which is workforce housing requirements. And the requirements are based on a unit ratio based on income categories. So that's a breakdown that goes, that varies. The location requirements, regional activity centers and corridors tie to land use. And there's also a pay-in-lue fee. So a property owner can pay in lieu of, rather than building the affordable housing, and that gets split between the city and the county, the amount they pay. The other option is a land use plan amendment. So a property owner can do a land use plan amendment, or it could be a city-initiated land use plan amendment for like a master plan area. Those will be the ways in the future that unit allocations are handed out. And that's my presentation. I'll take any questions. Any slide you want me to go to in particular? I'll be glad to do so.
Could you go back to the original slide where it showed the review process? So on the citywide FLEX, it all goes to Planning and Zoning Board?
For citywide residential FLEX goes to Planning and Zoning Board, and also for commercial FLEX acreage, which is deals with, you know, the non-residential FLEX. They both come to you.
So on the last slide for the availability, where you showed the FLEX units that are available and the ones that were applied for, right. So you've got the available, or 5,427. It looks like pending, you have a little more than what's available, right?
That is correct.
So we're going to have 5,000 units coming before the Planning and Zoning Board for approval?
You have already, well, no, this includes what's been assigned. So if you go back up here, there's FLEX units that are assigned in the regional activity centers that are not coming to the Planning and Zoning Board. Same thing with the northwest RAC. So the ones that come to you are citywide allocation that goes to.
Outside of the RACs.
I'm sorry?
Outside of the RACs.
Exactly.
But can you, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. And how many, can you tell by your chart, how many of those outside of the RACs?
Outside of the RACs?
That are purely FLEX, not, not part of the RAC?
The ones that are outside the RACs?
Yeah.
I can tell you the majority of that number that's been allocated are within the regional activity center, specifically downtown.
Okay.
Yeah.
And by virtue of being in the RAC, then they're, they don't have to come to Planning and Zoning Board?
Typically, what we do is we hand out the RAC entitlements before we dip into the FLEX. The challenging area is downtown regional activity center is the most challenging to monitor that, because we've had some projects modify their program, right, where we're also handing out FLEX units to projects going through the approval process. So it's, the next two projects are going to exhaust the RAC entitlements for downtown, and we'll go back to the FLEX. So technically, when you look at this number here that says very pending, 5467, and then what's available, 5427, there's a 40-unit difference there. It's, we're not really there yet, because we have to allocate the RAC units first. This is just the FLEX numbers. So we're not in the negative, basically.
But if you have, you have 5,467 pending, so someone applies for a FLEX unit, there really isn't anything for them to apply for.
So we've been tracking it until the policy, for the county policy to get approved. We've been tracking them under the FLEX table, just so we can keep track of them. And we're going to be handing out whatever's remaining FLEX, whatever remaining regional activity center units are, and then we'll switch over to the policy, the county policy plan for units. So we have to monitor that. We have to monitor all how that gets exhausted. So depending on where the project is coming in, so for instance, if it comes in the northwest RAC, there's still 3,000-plus units available to allocate. So we would not tap into the county land use policy to give units in that area, because there's available RAC units. Same thing with the south RAC has 262 units. We would exhaust those as well. And the beach is not, the beach is not eligible for the policy, the county policy.
So Jim, is, and I'm just, this is kind of a follow-up. On the FLEX units that would be required to come before Planning and Zoning Board, if you're in the downtown RAC, you would, you wouldn't have to come.
Not to Planning and Zoning Board, no.
But you can still designate FLEX?
Yep. Yep. Based on our Unified Land Development Code, the approval processes vary depending on where it's at in the city. And you can see on the screen how FLEX is assigned as a site plan level two, subject to call-up for the different regional activity centers, yes.
So there should be an asterisk on that city FLEX zone, which has P&amp;Z board, level three. It should say asterisk, unless you're in the RAC downtown.
Well, well, no. If you look at the chart at the top, it says RAC or FLEX units is called out separately for the RACs. Citywide, city FLEX zone is a citywide application of it.
Or FLEX. I got you. So that's kind of your asterisk there. I got you. Okay.
So, so Jim, let's say somebody is a developer, Jay, right?
Yep.
Somebody is a developer, and they see some land they like downtown, and they want to build a high-rise, and they haven't started that process yet. So basically, am I understanding it correctly, that now there are more units that are being applied for and in the DRC process than there are available? So it would be then reasonable for that person to assume that they'll, whatever their project, their project will be, putting aside the 500 units that are left in the, of allocated, their approval is going to really hinge on whatever the county, and what does that look like?
So the process, like, once we exhaust all the units, the regional activity center units, and also the FLEX units, there will be no other option unless you do a land use plan amendment, meaning either the city or the property owners do it, or you utilize the policy, the county policy, and do affordable housing. And there's a formula-based unit ratio that you get for building so many affordable units versus how many market units you get. That'll give you your total units for your project. But there's also form-based regulations, so that will regulate how much of that density can be built. And there's requirements for the properties to be located on major corridors, on certain land use categories, and so forth.
Yeah, I'm talking downtown RAC. There's no.
Downtown would be eligible for it if they would meet the requirements, yes.
And approximately, how many market rate units do you get for, just use one of the percentage of income examples, like how many, let's say you'd sit 80% of the AMI or 100% AMI?
Yeah, off the top of my head, there's three different categories. Very, very low income category, you get like, I believe, 19 market rate units for one low, low income category, which is 60% or below, I think, the area median income. So it depends on what they're, they're building. It'll range how many the formula bases gets them, how many units.
And is there a limit on the number of units in, through that process, or is that, is that process unlimited?
Unlimited.
Okay. Got it.
If I may, it also comes with an in lieu of option. So there is an in lieu of fee, and that fee, just recently, it's going through the county process to be amended to $10,000 per unit. And then keep in mind the 5,000 pending units that we have. If you have a project today, even if you bring it in today, it's not, it's not necessarily out of the question that you might not beat somebody out that's in the process, because there's that many that are in the process. And the way we allocate them is first serve, you know, first come, first served basis as far as the approval. The actual allocation happens at approval of the site plan.
10,000 per total units, for total number of units in the project?
For the county policy.
Right. Okay, so then that person would reasonably, you know, expect that if they're building 300 units, that they're going to either have to include affordable units in their project, or pay $3 million additional project cost to build that project.
They have to pay in lieu of if they're not going to do the affordable units.
Got it. Thank you.
Can I have a follow-up question? Hey, Jim, have you or anybody else on staff discussed maybe starting to look at getting additional units, or is that not being discussed yet? And when should we kind of ring that bell and start talking about that?
Yes, the planning staff has discussed the possibility of doing land use plan amendments for specific areas in the city. So someone who wants an option other than the policy, the county policy, but we did not get full direction to proceed on that.
Okay. It seems like we're getting pretty close.
Huh?
Seems like we're getting pretty close, you know?
It's in the works, John.
Pushing the ceiling, right?
Yeah.
Can we get a copy of this?
Yeah, I'd be glad to share it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That was awesome.
All right. Nothing else, we'll adjourn the meeting.